Welcome again to the second candidate forum that Age Friendly Seattle has hosted. Age Friendly Seattle is a citywide initiative. Our job is to make Seattle a great place to grow up and grow old, which is a tall order, but we are up for it. And part of that is fostering dialogue between community members and elected leaders and community leaders and making sure we create spaces for these conversations. So I want to remind folks that we are not endorsing either candidate today. This is an unbiased candidate forum and you are free to make your own decisions at the end of this event. So we all know that Seattle, like many places around the world, is aging. So by 2040, the number of people who are aged 85 and above in King County is expected to grow by 175%. That's a lot of people who are aging. And so it's really incumbent upon our city to use every tool in its toolbox to think about how we will create more age-friendly communities. So I'm really glad that both our candidates are here and willing to engage in this discussion today. Welcome, folks. We may have people trickling in, which is great. Everyone is welcome to grab a seat where you can find one. I also want to point out that you are welcome to use your democracy vouchers today. Does anybody remember receiving your democracy voucher in the mail? One person, maybe two. I also forgot these existed. So this is a great tool that this city has made available to all of us who are 18 and above. We all get $100 to give to the candidate of our choice. And this has really fostered more participation and more civic engagement among Seattle voters. So I encourage you to use your democracy voucher. If you brought it today, you can use it today. If you did not bring it, if you have lost it somewhere in the abyss of your mail pile like I have, Fedden over here can help you get a replacement voucher. So please use her as a resource and she can tell you more about how the program works. So with that, I'm gonna just get us started. We asked for questions when you RSVP'd. Many of you submitted great questions. I have taken the liberty of compiling those, and so I will be asking those of our candidates. Each candidate will get two and a half minutes to respond. We will alternate which candidate starts first. Candidates will be able to make an opening statement and a closing statement. If you have questions that occur to you throughout the program, we have team members who will pass out paper and pens. You can write them down and hand them to me, and I will do my best to pass that along to the candidates. So use me as a funnel. And then you'll have some time at the end of the formal program, again, to continue conversations informally with the candidates, keep talking about issues that might be important to you. Lastly, I'll just remind us all that this event is being recorded. We have several folks who are interested in watching this later and using closed captions and translating into other languages, so we will make it available online. Anything else before we get started? Okay, and candidates, there is a timekeeper in the back, so you'll get a notice when you have 30 seconds left and when time is up. So with that, I'm gonna invite the candidates to introduce themselves for two and a half minutes each, and then I'll launch into the questions. So Joy, you're sitting next to me, so I'll have you go first.
Testing one, two. Is that okay? Perfect.
Just to know from the sound view.
Yes.
Make sure that you actually, yeah, it's the live scene.
Got it.
Yep, yep.
Right here with it. That's good. Okay.
Thank you.
We've gotten to test hundreds of microphones all across the city and sound system, so this is a super thing. We're getting there. Definitely want to thank Age Friendly for putting us on and Gentide for putting on this forum. That is super important. My name is Joy Hollingsworth, running for Seattle City Council, District Three. I have three generations here in Seattle. Ray was born and raised in the Central District. I'm a small business owner, nonprofit leader, community connector, and I'm a problem solver. And I come from a long line of public service that literally dedicated their lives to public service here in our city, whether it was my dad who worked for the Seattle Parks Department for 30-plus years, my mom who worked for King County Housing Authority for 30-plus years, and also had a grandmother who was on our school board back in the 70s as well. And I've seen how public policy has really impacted our community and a lot of the people that unfortunately have fallen through those gaps. I got into the race because of public safety has to work better for our community, our response to homelessness, also our infrastructure in our city, housing affordability that's going on in our community as well, and also our youth and how all of those intersect and they all come together in ways in which they're very similar. And that was a lightbulb moment for me, understanding that. And I literally grew up in a Seattle where we always embraced community, culture, and commerce. And that's why I'm so happy to be in this space right now, because I remember Capitol Hill that was really vibrant to our LGBTQIA community, our artist community. It's now an echo of what it used to be, but I know that the city is, you know, on a certain direction where we can start bringing a lot of those fundamental elements back of really building a city. And that's why I'm running, really is to build a foundation of home for Seattle. When I'm knocking on doors and I'm asking people, "What do you want? What do you want from our city?" And they said, "Joy, we want Seattle to feel like a home. We want Seattle to feel very connected. We want Seattle to feel like a community again." And all of that, I want to bring to City Council so that can be interwoven into a lot of the policies that we've seen come from City Council, but for that to be directed upstream from our different communities, because every single community, block by block, has different unique needs. And every community and neighborhood has specific needs and groups within that community as well. And so that's why I'm running. I'm really happy to be here and looking forward to answering all of the wonderful questions. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alex Hudson, and I have the honor and privilege of being a candidate for Seattle City Council here in our beautiful District Three. I want to say thank you to everyone for hosting this and welcome to the neighborhood. I live just about three blocks away from here, and so I've walked by this building for a long time and am very excited to see that it's now creating homes for people in our community. I was raised here in King County. I grew up on the other side of the lake and I went to the same high school that both of my parents did. And because my dad had a good teemster job, a union job, I was able to be the first person in my family to go to and graduate from college. And so I did my study abroad up in Waukesha County at Western and then came back here. And the year that I graduated from college, I was diagnosed with Hodgkin's lymphoma, which is a form of blood cancer. And because I didn't have health insurance or come from, you know, a family with resources, I got the life-saving medicine that I needed thanks to Medicaid. And so even though I had grown up in a family that had a lot of kitchen-table politics, that's when I decided that I needed to dedicate my life to the public service, which is what I've done throughout my entire career. For five years, I ran the neighborhood organization in First Hill. I see some of my neighbors here and some of the projects that we've worked on together, including building affordable housing, building projects like the Rise and Lake House, which is just up the street from here. It's the largest affordable housing project completed in Seattle in the last 60 years that has housing there for families, working families, and 110 units of housing for formerly homeless seniors. Because one of the things I'm sure we'll talk about is that actually the fastest-growing group of people who are entering homelessness are our seniors. And that's because of the rapid escalation in the cost of housing. So I have dedicated my career to working on things like building great neighborhoods. I ran an organization that made public transit free for every kid in Washington and promoting public transit, which is an essential service, especially for seniors. I care a lot about housing and homelessness. I have a lot of experience doing this. Care a lot about public safety and well-being and the resources and support that we need so that everyone is safe in our communities and making sure that we have good jobs on a healthy planet so that everybody can make a home here in our city.
Thanks for the question. Thank you. Okay, so you both mentioned public safety, and we asked participants when you RSVP'd what issues you cared most about. No surprise, public safety and housing were top of the list, so I want to start there. So let's start with public safety. I will ask this question in two parts. So seniors are telling us that they are fearful and unable to walk on sidewalks because they are blocked by people with severe mental health challenges, many of whom may be experiencing homelessness. So the first part of this question is, I'm gonna ask you, let's see. So the first part will address drug use, and then the second will focus on legal removal. First question is, how will you deal with continued open drug use on the streets and parts of Capitol Hill? We started with Joy's statement, so Alex, I'll have you start the question and we'll flip back and forth.
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, I'm your neighbor. We go to the same grocery store. I'm, one thing I didn't mention at the top is I'm a mom. I have a kid, oh, she's 15 years old. She's a freshman at Garfield, and I want for her to be able to be as safe as anybody, right? So I know what it feels like to have to second-guess whether it's okay to go to the grocery store or go to the park, and that's not okay. You should be able to be a member of your community regardless of whether it's day or night or what's happening without any fear at all. So we need to get people connected to services and get them inside so that they can get the help that they need and that we can have safer streets. And the way that we do that is we start scaling up the resources that are available. There was a law that was passed recently to criminalize drug use, and that has a lot of nice comments in there about diversion and treatment. But the reality is that there is no diversion. We don't have drug court. We don't have community court. There is no tool to divert anybody. And even if we did, we don't have any treatment resources or support to hurt people into. I talked to some folks the other day who are in a drug treatment program up here who had gotten that way, threw an arrest, and I asked them how long it took. And they had been court-ordered to this program, and it took them 30 days. Young man who had to live in a tent for 30 days while he was waiting to get the treatment. He said he was bare-knuckling the whole time just hoping that he could get through so that he could show up to that appointment and save his own life. That's too much to ask for people, people who are really suffering, people who are really ill. So we need to scale up overdose recovery centers. We need to invest in the short-term treatment so that we can get people connected to Suboxone and Sublucate, the medication that they need to get stabilized. And then we need to provide people with longer-term treatment services and housing so that people can get stable. This sounds like a tall order, but we have seen what is possible when the government treats something like a crisis. And I believe that our fentanyl and our untreated mental health crisis is an emergency and that our government should not be continuing to hand-bring about this, but be delivering these proven, effective, sustainable, long-term solutions at scale.
So the recent bill that was passed at the city level, I agree it wasn't perfect, but I would have voted yes on that bill. I would have voted no on the first one, yes on the second one. I know that it's really challenging to see what's been going on in our streets, what's been going on, you see on transit. Like, we've seen it happen. I know my family has been affected by addiction as well, my brother-in-law. And so one of the things that we really have to do, I went to a transitional housing, and as they were pulling people off the streets and they were transitioning them into transitional housing, then to get them onto permanent supportive housing or whatever pathway that they were gonna get on for housing. One of the things that was really interesting is there wasn't Suboxone and Methadone treatment facilities that was brought to them. They had to literally go there through an Uber or coordinated ride. Like, it was very cumbersome for people to be able to get treatment. And so one of the things that we need to do better as a city is do a coordinated effort into our transitional housing when people are pulled literally right off the street and into those places where we have mobile treatment centers. We can do a better effort with our meal service providers. We have community lunch over here off of 10th and Republican. They serve from 12 to 1:00. They serve about 100, 150 people a day that go through serving meals. And they intentionally did that from 12 to 1:00 so they could bring other service providers there during the day instead of doing the dinner service. And, you know, when we think about coordinated efforts, we have to think about all those in one when we're being able to attack, unfortunately, the fentanyl prices that we've seen on our street. The second piece is bringing everybody inside and off the street as fast as possible through emergency shelters, RV car lots, tiny homes, thinking about ways we can get everybody inside and off the street as fast as possible to lower the barriers for housing options.
So this is a bit related, so maybe you want to expand on things. What can be done? Someone is asking, what can be done to move people who are living in vehicles and parked in our neighborhoods and off of our neighborhood streets? So, yeah, Joy, I'll start.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Fully support, and I have to read into the barriers, what's going on with Inner Bay and standing up that car lot. But we have to have more RV car lots for people in addition to connecting them with the sanitary conditions, so like water, sewer, garbage, electricity, the communal space of the kitchen piece as well. And then also, we have to meet people where they are as well. And so, again, when I talk about how we have these community efforts of meal services right here in our district, those RV car lots can also be seen as a place where we can send service providers. We can send social workers. We can send different organizations to be able to do a lot of outreach, to figure out how we're gonna navigate to get people into permanent supportive housing. But I think right now, the encampment situations that we see with our RVs, like, we have to have designated spots. When we did the big, unfortunately, the sweeps before the MLB All-Star game, I wish we had set up an RV car lot in Soto and connected all those people into that lot with resources. That would have been a better use of dollars and time and money and resources rather than getting people, you know, sweeping people around. But if we had, we had money to get them, you know, in those places. And also, too, there, I think it's on, it's on, not Lander, but I work at Northwest Harvest, and we do experience a lot of RVs and car lots literally around Northwest Harvest because we do Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We service a lot of people in those communities. And so connecting with resources like that all into one would be extremely helpful. Sorry.
There are thousands of people who live in their vehicles because that's the only place that they can get behind a locked door to be able to sleep at night. And that goes one of two ways for people. We either make it harder for them to exist and take their car away, and then they end up on the street in a tent, under a bridge, in a doorway, or we figure out how to get that person connected to housing. I want to see people get connected to housing. And so the solution to all of these problems around homelessness is right there in the name. It's providing more housing for people. That takes some time, right? We know that a building like this can take years to build. So in the meantime, what do we do? I support RV parking lots and safe parking lots. This is a strategy that's unfortunately, and fortunately at the same time, becoming more common. We even see some of the colleges in California creating parking lots for students because of the cost of housing has gotten so exorbitant down there. We need to wrap those places around with services, bathrooms, showers, a place to do some laundry, someone to talk to, connection to services. And then we need to build a whole lot more housing as fast as we possibly can by building buildings like this, by retrofitting some of our existing and empty buildings, creating all kinds of solutions as quickly as we can to get people inside and on a better pathway. I talked to some folks who live in their RVs down in Soto and what they thought about the RV parking lot, right? Because we can talk about it all day long, but it's gotta, it doesn't have to just work for us, right? It has to work for the people who the service is for. And what I was told is that one of the barriers is that you're told that if you move into the RV parking lot and you accept housing after that, you have to forfeit your RV. And the guy that I talked to has been homeless for over a decade. He's like, "I don't want them. Even if I had a house," he's like, "I need to know that that's not getting taken away from me because I've said yes to things before and I'm still here." And so we need to figure out how we design these programs so that they meet the needs of the people who are experiencing the harm and so that we can get people truly on that pathway to safe and stable housing.
Thank you. And I'll have you keep the mic and I'm gonna switch gears a little bit, but continue with the housing theme. So renters in particular. So you mentioned that older adults are the fastest-growing portion of the homeless population. We know that most people want to age in place. People want to stay in the homes they love and the communities that they call home. However, Washington prohibits rent control, and it can be difficult for renters on fixed incomes to keep pace with the rising cost of living here in Seattle. In King County, more than two-thirds of folks who are 60-plus years old are rent-burdened. What will you do to prevent older adult renters from being displaced by longtime rentals in communities?
Yeah, this is an important question. I'm a renter myself. I've been a renter my whole life. I, at this point, don't expect to ever be anything else, and I have a family. And so having an apartment, like being a renter with a child is experiencing some of that same kind of fear around how expensive it is to have a two-bedroom and to be worried about what happens when your lease renewal comes up. And I am still in the employment market, right? So if you are rightfully so, you've done your time in the employment market and you're ready to be retired and you're on a fixed income, even scarier to be thinking about what those leases are. And if you're a member of the LGBTQIA+ community, then you've experienced the downsides of a homophobic society that has made it so that you have even less economic purchasing power in our market. So that's just unfairness on unfairness on unfairness. So we need to build more housing so that we can have the cost come down. Minneapolis, this sounds like, okay, sure, Minneapolis did major changes to their zoning, and they did a ton of investments in affordable, regulated housing, and it's the only city in the country that isn't experiencing double-digit inflation. Inflation in the city of Minneapolis is only 1%. The national standard, I guess, sorry, not double digits, it's about 8 or 9%. How? It's because the single piece of expense that people have, your house, got cheaper or stayed the same. So we can change these economic trends and we can make it possible. So we need to have more regulated, affordable housing like this beautiful building here. We need to make it faster, easier, and cheaper to deliver all kinds of housing so that the market, the housing is available all over the place. We need to build, you know, not just townhomes that are like a bunch of ladders connecting housing, but we need to have single flats, right? So that they've got universal design and that people can age in place in those communities. And we need to make it easier for folks to do conversions of their existing homes so that if you do own a home, that you can have the mortgage assistance that comes with being able to have a basement dwelling or be able to rent out in your backyard. So there's a couple of ways that are proven solutions to stabilize the cost of housing.
So I currently live in my grandmother's home. She bought in 1947, and it was $5,000, which is like wild to think about in the city. And in 2001, 1998, my grandfather passed, and the house was like too big. It was a three-story home, and we saw our neighborhood changing. There were a lot of people that were moving because of affordability. They were being gentrified out of the Central District, and we converted her house into a triplex in 2001. And the way we were able to do that, we got our permits in three months, and we turned around the house within 15 months. That's not everyone's story, and we know that a lot of people don't know the technical assistance to do that. Also, the funding. We also were fortunate to be able to figure out, our house was paid for, so we took a loan against that property. A lot of people in the Central District, they were not allowed to take loans out against their house to refurbish it. The banks paid them more to move than they did to refurbish their home. So the first thing we'd love to do is if you want to be able to age in place, when I'm knocking on doors, there's a lot of multi-generational families that live there. You see a lot of adults, and then they have their adult kids who live there as well, and they want to be able to pass that house down to them. So we have to have better options of technical assistance and funding for people to be able to age in place, maintain their home, and add, if they want to add an ADU to the backyard, a triplex or duplex to convert their home. The second thing we need to do, our city has been really, really, small landlords have really been squeezed out in our city. There have been a ton of, I'm not talking about the big venture capital buildings that are around Seattle where they're in New York or New Jersey, and they're hiking up rents all day, but like the small mom-and-pops that have a basement unit or an ADU, they're constrained to a lot of the regulations that have been passed at City Hall. And so if we can kind of figure out, they've been one of the most affordable housing providers in our city at like well below market rate. If we can have them at the table of conversation and figure out how we increase them, more would be significant. The other way is we have to streamline our building process. It takes a long time to get an permit. If we were trying to convert our house today, it would take us like two, three years. And that's why there's this bottleneck within our city. We have to streamline that process so we can make it super faster for people to be able to build houses.
Thank you. Okay, continuing with housing. This district encompasses a lot of waterfront, and folks are wondering, there are many seniors and other people who are living on fixed incomes who have lived on the waterfront for many years and would like to stay. These residents have felt ignored in housing and transit planning, and people want to know, would you be an advocate for helping those who live on the water?
No, absolutely. I think, so this district, we're probably talking about a lot of the houseboats that are on our district. We just picked up Eastlake, so we have those, and then Portage Bay area as well. There's a lot of homes that are on there that are houseboats. And when I was speaking to some people that were trying to advocate about their home being converted for their, the houseboats, they felt like they weren't listened to and didn't have like, didn't have a representative that was able to connect with them about a lot of the issues that they were having on the waterfront, which like new regulations. And this goes for a lot of different organizations and communities in Seattle. They feel like a lot of our stuff is passed before they even know what's going on. Like, they just look like a phone call or, "Hey, could you be included in this policy process? Can we just have a talk to tell, 'Hey, this is how this is gonna impact me if you pass this so we can mitigate this.'" And we've been hearing this all around. So absolutely, I know some of the issues that are going on on our waterfront for the people that are living in houseboats, and some of those for them, you know, are some of the most affordable options because they have been there for years and they don't have a place to move. When I always hear about people saying, you know, they tell me, "Well, you can just sell your house and move. You can get a fortune for it." And they're like, "Well, where am I gonna go in Seattle, right? Like, I'm here, I have to stay here." So definitely would like to elevate those voices and ensure that when communities come to us, you know, we're not passing laws that are gonna just like harm people, that they also are at the table at the very beginning before the policy is even set in motion.
Yeah, the houseboats and the floating-on-water homes communities are some of the most iconic places to live in our whole city. Like, we're literally, like, we're famous for having this kind of housing, and we should be preserving, protecting, and cherishing it. And I know that there are many regulations that have been passed at the state level and then interpreted at the city level that are totally divorced from the reality of the people who live in floating homes or floating-on-water homes. And so we need to do a better job. What this exposes is exactly what Joy was talking about, which is a city that doesn't listen to people, a city that acts like it like knows everything and then just passes the rules and then makes you beg to be heard about the ways in which this is possibly gonna like displace you from your housing. And that's not okay. And so the City Council, one of the very most important roles of the City Council in addition to passing legislation and policies and approving our budget, is providing constituent services. So if the Department of Planning or the Department of Construction and Inspection passes some director's rule that has this consequence of making your life more difficult, you should be able to pick up the phone or send an email or come to an office that's convenient for you or even come on down to City Hall and have somebody and have somebody who's going to listen to you. I had mentioned at the top here that I ran the neighborhood organization for five years in First Hill. And I'm not going to call you out, but I know we worked on some things together where we wanted to make improvements and changes in our neighborhood. And we tried to do that as deeply and as community-based as possible. So I have a lot of experience in this realm of serving people at that geographic level by saying, okay, well, here's some problems. There's some things that we need to solve. But let's bring everybody together and go at the speed of trust in order to make sure that we're creating policy that solves problems, not creates them.
Okay, I've got one more housing question, and then move on to a couple of other topics. So this is about affordable housing. So many older adults rely on affordable housing. Not everyone is fortunate to live in such a beautiful building like this one. I found out recently that there are more older adults living in Seattle Housing Authority buildings that are non-senior designated than in senior designated housing, meaning that folks are aging in place in affordable housing. And so constituents would like to know, what is the city doing to address the living conditions in Seattle Housing Authority buildings and other affordable housing buildings? And folks have referenced issues with squatters, theft, and elder abuse. So Alex, you have a question.
Yeah, I mentioned at the top that I'm on the board of the largest affordable housing provider in King County, including some of our properties, which are specifically for seniors. And so we have some, like, a lot of experience, not just building housing. That's not enough. You have to maintain it. You have to operate it. You have to build a community within those buildings so that people feel like they have a home, not just a house. And so Seattle Housing Authority, of course, is some of the most important housing that we have, and it's permanently affordable and it's protected under the public realm. And so there are some very shameful examples in, well, in Yes! or Caris, which isn't part of this district anymore, but used to be, of allowing for housing to become deeply substandard in its health and safety just baseline. And that's not okay. And so you have to wonder, why is it that housing for poor people? Why is it that housing for immigrants and refugees? Why is it that housing for Black conditionists and people of color is allowed to become so substandard? And it's because we know that we have a government that has perpetuated racism, ageism, homophobia, ableism, et cetera, in the way that we've allowed some of this housing to become so unlivable and unsafe. And so we need to be really investing, not just in the creation of new housing, although that is so important. We have to be maintaining and preserving the housing that we have. One, so that it creates a dignified place for everyone to live. And two, so that we can have that housing for the longest amount of time possible. It's much more economical to preserve that housing than it is to have to build new stuff all the time. And we should be trying to maximize the amount of years of our housing, just like we try to maximize the number of good years in our life as well. So I'd like to see us be investing a whole lot more, not just in the creation of new housing, although again, super important, but in the preservation of what we have.
Could you ask that question?
Sure, yeah. So the question in here is, what is the city doing to address living conditions in Seattle Housing Authority and other affordable housing buildings? And they reference issues with squatters, theft, and elder abuse.
Squatters, theft, and elder abuse? Absolutely. One of the ways in which the city can do a better job, look, we know that public safety is on a lot of people's mind in our city. And I think we have relied on our affordable housing care providers, our frontline city workers, whether it's our librarians or our Parks Department or our bus drivers, to navigate really difficult situations around our city that they're not really trained to be doing right now. And so one of the ways the city can step up is about providing services in which they don't have to interject in some of those situations. It should be, you know, our fire, our EMT, our police department, social workers handling a lot of those situations, first off. The second thing, the second thing is, the city also has to do a better job of, we know our Seattle Housing Authority, you know, they are our biggest service provider, not biggest service provider, but they are our housing provider here in the city. A lot of those conditions that people are experiencing in these places, whether it's, you know, dilapidated infrastructure or it's, you know, some things going on in their hallways as well. The city has to do a better job of working in partnership with a lot of the service providers as well to ensure that residents feel safe. They feel, you know, these are people's homes. My mom worked at, like I said, at King County Housing Authority, but she grew up in the Calio Projects in New Orleans. And she took really good pride after she worked at King County Housing to ensure that everyone's like maintenance level was so on point at King County. Like, that was like her thing because how she grew up, she knew how she grew up in New Orleans and in the Calio Projects. And so the city should be held accountable, should be holding service providers accountable for some of the missteps that they're doing, especially for the infrastructure piece as well, to ensure that residents have that safety. But it's a partnership too. The city has to get real about public safety.
Okay, I'm going to do, I'm going to ask for my own time check. So you can write down what time it is. What does it call?
2:22.
2:22, okay, great. So I've got a couple of other questions. So just to let folks in the audience know about climate change, about adults with disabilities, and about community policing. So if you have questions on other topics that are burning, feel free to write them down, and we'll try to get to them as well. And if you weigh them, someone will grab them and bring it to me. So, climate change is here. Older adults are disproportionately impacted by extreme heat and extreme cold. People want to know, well, people want to know what you would do to adapt in your community as climate change takes a larger toll on communities. Specifically, what, do you support the establishment of an Office of Urban Forestry, such as the City of Boston has?
I know who wrote that question. You did, because that's the first thing we talked about. Absolutely, look, one of the things that I would love to do for, if I was elected to city council, would be protecting a lot of our tree canopy. That's here in our, in our city. We have a beautiful tree canopy. We're the Emerald City for a reason. And if you live in South Park, your life expectancy is six years less than someone who lives north of the Ship Canal because of the environmental impacts that you are surrounded by. And if you just travel to our south end in Rainier Beach, there's not a lot of tree canopy. That's within certain neighborhoods. If you travel like up north or Queen Anne, certain different places. So the recent tree ordinance that was passed at council, there's two things that I would love for us to change in that. Number one, we would ensure that developers did an audit of all the trees along the sideline at the beginning of, before they submit their plans. Not during the middle, where they could cut them down and say, hey, it wasn't there. They had to do it at the beginning. And then they would have to make every effort to be able to keep those trees within their design as they're designing, you know, whatever housing piece that they're doing. The second thing I would like to do, for us to do better, is to work with our Seattle Parks Department to be able to take care of trees a lot better in our city. Because we cut down a lot of old trees, and then we plant a lot of new ones. And those have about three decades before they're able to have an impact. But they're dying all over Seattle because we don't know how to maintain them properly and better. And so that could be a partnership with our Seattle Parks Department, our newly office of the Tree Forestry Sustainability Tree Lover Department. And to where like community groups also take care of those trees. Our Seattle Parks Department, like, we have to, we have to do a lot better of taking, planting more trees, but also taking care of them and then saving a lot of the older trees that are within our community.
Yeah, I definitely want us to be taking care of our trees, right? Like, these are, trees are not only, they provide so much, right? Like, I'm not going to go super nerdy here, but trees make us healthier in so many ways. It makes us healthier just to be able to see them. Biophilic reaction that we have. Being able to see trees makes it so that you heal better. That's why hospitals have, you can see trees when you're in a hospital. They cool our air. Like, I've walked, somebody asked me, how many doors open now? 12,197 as of this morning. And I can tell you, that's a lot of blocks. And you can tell the difference in the heat between when you're on a block that has trees and a block that doesn't. It's like immediately noticeable. And the air quality that the trees provide by taking our carbon dioxide and turning it back into oxygen, it is really, really important. And this is a super cost-efficient way for us to deal with our rising climate. And so there's a couple of things we need to do. Of course, we need to take care of our trees. We need to plant more in the right of way. It's the city's responsibility to create good trees that are throughout our neighborhood. We can be investing in that through our own public investments, but scaling up our street trees program, which is a free-to-you program where the city will come and bring you a tree. And they'll help you plant it, they'll help you take care of it. So we need to scale that up, both in terms of the marketing and the availability of it. We need to also get real about needing to have more cooling and clean air centers. I met with some folks from the libraries, and they were telling me that there are several libraries in our system that don't have cooling or heat pumps in them, and they have to close every time it gets over 80 degrees. This is preposterous. We should have all of our libraries, all of our community centers be places where you can go to get cooled, to get access to clean air, not that shut at the time when we need them the most. Because we know that this heat and this air is the most deadly to our babies and to our elders. And so having that, those clean air facilities is really, really important. The city can also be scaling up our investment and making it so that people can put heat pumps into their own homes so that your home can be a place where you're able to not experience deadly weather.
So I have a couple, well, I'm going to ask a question about disabilities now. So as people age, many experience disability, although not everybody. It's important to remember. Many people are aging also with a disability, not just into disability. So one constituent is specifically asking about adults on the autism spectrum and pointing out that adults with autism tend to experience high rates of homelessness, unemployment, poverty, isolation, and chronic disease. Yet advocacy often focuses on the needs of children. What would you do to ensure that adults on the autism spectrum receive the support and services they need?
Yeah. I would ask you what you need. I'm not going to sit up here and pretend like I'm an expert in what it is that you want in order to feel cherished and included and to have your needs met. I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask people. I'm going to ask our HLM Seattle program. I'm going to ask our Commission on Disabilities. I'm going to find out what it is. But we know some of the things, right? You want to be able to feel safe. You want to be able to have a community center or a place where you can go to feel that connection, to have those opportunities, to engage in the way that feels good and healthy and like you have some control there. And so I know that those are some of the basic tenets. Feel safe, have community places where you're valued, where you're included, where you're welcome and cherished. But really, the solutions come from the people who are experiencing those negative outcomes. And so my response would be to say, how can I help? What would you like for this city to do? What are we doing well that we can keep doing? What are we not doing very well that we need to change?
I also wanted to mention about the environment before I answer this question because it reminded me when I was looking out here, is that this building, the design, we can do a better job on building designs in our city. Airflow, right? Like, this building probably has really great airflow, being able to go back and forth because of the intentional design. I would, like Alex said, I would actually listen to what communities need. I think we need to do a better job of not acting like we know everything on city council and then just passing stuff and just acting like, hey, well, I know this, I know that. When I don't know anything, I go to the experts and I say, hey, let me center your voice and figure out how I amplify what your needs are. But one of the things that I think we can do better at, especially for people aging in place, disabilities, autism also, is creating better community center services. And right now, we have them, but they're underfunded, and we don't have enough staff. You look at places that are overseas, particularly in Asia, they have community gardens, they have, you know, tennis, they have activities. It's like building this sense of community and connection. And if anything, what we saw during the pandemic was a lot of isolation. And a lot of people struggled with not human touch or conversations. Trying to figure out how to unmute the button on Zoom. You know, all these different things which created these silos for people. And a lot of people were very disconnected. And, you know, we lost a lot of people because of that. There wasn't a lot of human connection. And so one of the ways I'd listen, but also figure out how we could have more programming at our community centers to be inclusive for younger folks and also our seasoned individuals.
Okay, I'm going to ask one more question around mental health, and then I think we'll end with kind of public, uh, community policing. I'll look to my friends in the back to see if we have any more time after that. So I have learned since taking this job that many older LGBTQIA+ folks end up feeling the need to hide their orientation when they may be forced to move to a group setting. So, which is why places like this are so incredible and an amazing resource in communities. But someone is asking, how do you plan to bring mental health services to LGBTQIA+ older adults and specifically BIPOC folks within that community? And if you could talk about access, affordability, resources, and residential homes, that'd be great.
Yeah, look, I know this very well. I was a, remember, I started at this predominantly white school, North Capitol Hill, Seattle Prep. I was a Black, gay, female going to a white school. And I couldn't hide my Blackness. But I did hide, you know, who I was, my identity, going through that school throughout just because of the fear of being treated differently or the fear of, you know, getting discrimination in some way. And, you know, that has been like my whole life of not disclosing like my identity in the beginning because I've always been wanting people to connect to me, enjoy the person, and not, you know, all these other things that, you know, includes myself. And so I know for a lot of people how hard that is to not disclose who they are and then go through that all their life and not have the access to the mental health, not have access to the services in the community. And so bringing it from a lens of experience, I think, is really important when you're talking about what type of programming you're doing. Is it intentional programming? Are we having, are we funding organizations where a lot of the, it's a diverse, a diverse, a diverse organization that understands the needs of the community? Do they look like the community they're serving? What type of programming are they doing? Like, all these things taken into place. And then also, you know, city council has not had a representative that, you know, connected or identified with LGBTQIA+ community in a very long time. And I feel like that community's been significantly neglected at City Hall as we are a really big part of this city and this community. And 30% of Gen Zers identify as queer. You know, like, this, this is, and it's because, you know, they're having these spaces in which they feel comfortable, they feel proud. They're able, I think it's a beautiful thing. But now the services have to start reflecting what that looks like for them to ensure that we're serving them properly as well. So it'd be looking at it from different lenses, but also ensuring that those communities particularly had a direct line and a voice to City Hall to make sure that they're interwoven into every access point for services.
Yeah, things have been really hard. Like, it feels like the whole Like, it feels like the whole world is falling apart and that there, it's really hard to feel like things are gonna get better. And there's not a lot of support. I'll, I'll speak to our families on example of, um, trying to support my young person. We, you know, we all know that young people are, are struggling, are some of the same conditions. And if you wanna get psychiatric care for urgent support for a young person, you're on a six-month waiting list. And we like prioritize children as opposed to the way that we treat elders in our community, which is to invisibilize them. So I can't even imagine how long those waiting lists are. So, we need to be supporting things like our human services department, our aging and disability services department, our public health department to be able to be creating more successful, sustainable pathways for mental health care providers, to be able to, um, have enough of them so that everybody can have the treatment on demand when they need it. There's things that are coming like our crisis response center, right? That, that it's great to be able to provide that very missing piece, but you shouldn't have to get to crisis before you get care. And so, I want us to be deeply investing in the mental health and wellbeing of all people, including our elders, especially our LGBTQIA+ seniors who are, are struggling under the weight of so many of the issues that we talked about, right? Struggling under the unaffordability of healthcare, the unaffordability of housing, the disappearance of our communities and the instability and the lack of safety and resources in our, in our city. And so, we start to kind of take a look at how we can be elevating all those things and then putting the actual resources into taking care of people and providing health and support. Then, my hope is that people will feel that they live in a society where it's very clear that they're valued. And I don't think that that's too much to ask.
Okay, last question before closing statements. Um, and we're going backwards a little bit, but we've gotten a lot of questions, so I wanna make sure we do more responsive to what people wanna hear about. Um, so we have a question about community policing. Do you see a role for this? Um, from what folks see, they feel like there's an absence of community policing. And then I also, I'm gonna combine this with other questions and comments we've received. Um, how do you deal with people who won't accept housing or substance abuse support and instead might be choosing to stay on the streets?
Yeah, um, we absolutely need to have community-based policing. This is a critical and vital thing. Right now, we know that, um, about twenty to forty percent of all calls into nine-one-one are about mental or behavioral health. So when we create the real alternatives, the social workers, the, the housing connectors, the case managers, to help with those folks, we're gonna be able to free up our police resources so that those folks can focus on violent crimes. Like what happened in the daycare, uh, in the neighborhood just the other day, or, or the really unfortunate hate crimes against, um, Asian-American seniors that have been happening in our Southland. We're gonna have our police do that. Police tell us that they can only hire a hundred and twenty-five people every year. And the, the estimate is we have about five hundred, um, police officer gaps. So that's gonna take us a while to get there. So what do we do in the meantime? Alternatives, community policing. One thing that's really missing here, I feel it, is there's no large enough Broadway or, or Capitol Hill community organization to take some responsibility for this too. So in First Hill, we were able to get reach-out workers who were coming and talking to folks who were living outside in our neighborhood to get them kind of connected. We don't have that here in Capitol Hill. So we need to support some of the community organizations that can, can help with that as well. So we have these multiple layers of safety and of community care. So, obviously, I think this is something that we've all called for. Uh, it's taken years to get a six-person pilot that has to be responding with police, so that's not really adequate or urgent enough either. So I'd like to see us, um, treat this, uh, with more urgency and with more resources. And then the piece around, um, people who are service-resistant. You know, I think what I would say to that is that there is a whole lot more people who are so desperate for someone to give them some help that we don't really have to worry about the people who are, who are resistant. There are plenty of people who are desperate, who are waiting, who are eager for someone to come and offer them something that is better than the miserable existence that they have right now if they're trying just to survive on our streets. So, let's start there.
I think the best, um, example of a community, um, policing officer in our city is Detective Cookie. Um, and, you know, someone, I think of someone who's like the epitome of creating safety in our communities and, um, connecting people to resources, uh, understanding the community that she's serving, uh, you know, being able to implement different programming and connecting with educators and kids, like, it's just the epitome is Detective Cookie. Um, and the reason why is because there's a lot of people in the community that look up to her because they know that, um, she, she builds trust with them. And I think that's one thing that I would like to see our, um, community, um, have with our department is where they're building trust with us. They have to earn our trust, um, in, in our community. And, um, I think that's gonna be really important. So it's our police, it's our fire, it's our EMT, it's our gun violence prevention programs, it is our social workers, it's our educators, it's our arts program, it's our in-school mentorship, it's our after-school mentorship. A lot of the activity going on in our city is high school and middle school kids. There was a parking lot shooting at Safeway in Rainier Beach. It was a middle school kid. You know, like, that's a failure on us as adults. And so, I'd say this stat, we can invest fifteen hundred dollars in mentorship right now or it's forty thousand dollars for them to be an EVO win. And so, we have to invest in them now, literally right now. Um, a lot of our, uh, our youth and our kids and giving them stuff to do after school and arts and late-night, you know, basketball and a youth portal, um, to be able to connect to employment and jobs. It's really hard if you're a youth to navigate and figure out summer jobs. I had my first job at Garbo Community Center, seven dollars fifty cents an hour. Taught me a lot of, about working. Um, the second piece to that is, um, uh, regarding people that might be refusing care or refusing housing. Let's focus on the people that do want it and we can cross that bridge with the people that don't. Because I think it's a very small percentage, but like, let's focus on the people that do want it. Let's get them off the streets and inside. And maybe those people who are refusing it, they see their friends and their people in their community that are getting the treatment and housing and they can follow, um, uh, along in that direction.
All right, so I've said I'm gonna do closing statements, so. Yeah, one more question, I feel a little bit of an obligation to ask you this. So maybe we can do a rapid-fire in like a one minute? So, or a timekeeper's back there? Um, great ideas. Folks are appreciating all of the services that you're speaking about. That said, what are your ideas for how to pay for this?
Yeah, um, that's the question. How do we pay for it? We have one minute?
Yes.
We're, yeah, okay, great. Um, okay, so a lot of the things that we're saying, um, I don't think some of them are like grandiose ideas that are like millions of dollars. When we talked about, like, the youth job portal, that's working with our IT department to, you know, uh, identify the jobs that are available for youth, to skim those down. And so, you can find that, I don't think that would be too much money or I would do my IT services. But we also talk about progressive revenue in our city and what that looks like. And, uh, the task force has put forth a number of progressive revenues. I do not want to squeeze out our middle class and our, um, uh, you know, our middle class that has literally have been, you know, squeezed significantly. Um, so C, uh, CEO tax, a high earners tax, uh, you know, jump start as well, that has helped, uh, progressive revenue in our city. We're looking at a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar gap one year and over four-hundred. I do not wanna cut any human services, uh, you know, department. I know a lot of times, it's the first thing to go and the last thing to get funded. Uh, and that's my time. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. A lot of what we're talking about are refinements to existing programs and these aren't huge items. I would say the second piece is, investing in people has a really good rate of return. I was just reading about a program in, uh, Vancouver where they did, similar to what they did down in Tacoma, they did a universal kind of basic income. And they gave people who were living unsheltered seventy-five-hundred dollars. And it sounds like a lot, you're like, whoa, what's happening? This saved almost nine thousand dollars, which means that the city basically made fifteen hundred dollars for every person whose life they made better. That's like a fifteen percent rate of return. And I'm not like a big stock market person, but I don't know where else you're getting that out here. Um, so, it is worth it to, to invest in people. It is costly to allow all of this human suffering. Well, from our moral and spiritual perspective, but from a financial perspective, and then I'll just real quick, and in terms of new revenue, I've talked a lot about it, municipal capital gains tax, which is a tax on the very wealthiest people in our city who are making lots and lots of money in the stock market, um, to pay for some of these things.
Okay, I know that was a tall order for a minute, so thanks for us squeezing that in. Um, so, I'm gonna let you make your closing statements. Alex, we'll start with you, but, um, before I do, I do wanna just read you the questions that we're gonna get to so you know what's on people's minds. So, uh, we've got a question about your thoughts on the Vancouver, B.C. vacancy tax. Is that something to consider in Seattle? We have a question around, um, how do you, how can the city encourage people to access mental health professionals given the long time delay that we know exists? Um, we've got a question around, how will you be less polarizing than your predecessor? Um, so you can interpret that, try to though. Um, and I think that's it. I may have missed some, I tried to combine as many as I could. If you've got other questions, I'm sure Alex and Joy will make themselves available for a few minutes afterwards. But, um, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Alex for two and a half minutes and, and with Joy.
Two and a half, okay. You've heard me talk a lot about my experience in, in doing this work and where that motivation comes from. I see how hard things are in this city because I'm a renter, I'm a public school mom. My family doesn't have a car, so we rely on public transit. And I'm walking around these neighborhoods and, and live in this community for a long time. And I know that things feel really hard right now. And there's every reason to feel like things just aren't gonna get better. They're really tough. But, I have seen example after example after example of the work that we do when we come together, making things better. And there is a difference between hard and impossible. This is the most beautiful city in the country and everyone should be able to find a safe, affordable place to live here and no one should sleep on our streets. We have everything we need here right now. We have this incredible natural beauty. We have hard-working, engaged, passionate, values-driven people like the people in this room. And we have a ton of wealth in this city being concentrated in the hands of too few and not getting where it needs to go. But these are the ingredients for success. With the political will and the leadership and the experience to take these conditions and turn them into solutions, to seize these opportunities, to say very clearly that government should be about uplifting people, you should know every single day that your city loves you back, that you are valued and that you are cherished and, and everything you need to prosper and to relax. That is possible with a city government that does that. I don't have a magic wand and we are just some people working together on this stuff, but I can tell you, I have seen incredible things happen in the past. And I know that we can make a meaningful, better difference in people's lives both today and long into the future. I would be honored to earn your support in your vote. Um, and I'm excited to have more opportunity to talk about these important issues.
I had a, um, basketball coach that, um, key-coached all over the world and coached for the Sonics. And after he retired, he trained me. And he put me in the corner and he made me just do pivoting with the ball for thirty minutes. Every single time we would, they, and I would go, Coach Hopkins, why are we doing this? He's like, trust me, if you wanna be a good guard, good point guard, good shooting guard, you have to learn how to pivot. All the time, pivot, pivot, pivot. And I tell that story because it's about the fundamentals of our city. Centering the fundamentals of infrastructure, the fundamentals of public safety, the fundamentals of housing, our response to homelessness, like, day-to-day operations that affect your lives to the forty-five city departments, fifteen thousand employees, the over seven-billion-dollar budget, all these different things that I think Seattle, we have not really prioritized within a long time. And that's why I'm literally running is so we can center our fundamentals in Seattle, the non-sexy stuff that, um, you know, people email, we're not even in office, and they are emailing us as if candidates about potholes and what are you gonna do on my sidewalk? And what are you gonna do about this tree down here? You know, um, what are you gonna do about these kids over here playing pickleball too loud? You know, I can, give me in to tell you all of the, the stuff that, and we're, we're not, we're just candidates. Um, I can only imagine what it's like to be in that seat, right? And everyone coming to you. But I think the beautiful thing about it is that, you know, you have a bunch of, we have city departments, we have city heads, we have all this in programming. I think it's gonna take a lot of traffic controlling and reconnecting our district, you know, to focus on the local issues that are literally right in front of us every day. And that's why I'm excited. Hopefully, um, you heard some things up here that you like, you've connected with our values and, and, um, I've earned your vote. Um, thank you so much and I can't wait to talk to everyone after.
Thank you.
But I think it's a good question. Let me preface it by saying, both of you are excellent. I wish you were almost running in separate districts. You represent a par, a shifting, changing paradigm that is desperately needed in Seattle. So my question is, whoever wins, would you bring the other person on on your staff?
I'm gonna repeat the question for the sake of everyone and the recording. Uh, audience member has said, both candidates are wonderful. Would rather that they be running in different districts so they could each win. The question is, if whoever wins, would you bring the other person on your staff? So, I guess I will allow, as a moderator, this last question to, um, close this out with.
I know it's a little, think about it.
Are we supposed to answer that? Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll make this super easy for Alex because, uh, I know she doesn't want me on her staff, but, I'm just funny. Um, I, I will say this, because I think it's, it's, um, because you just never know the future, but I will say something nice about Alex and hopefully she might say something nice about me. I think Alex is incredibly talented. Um, she knows policy very, very well. And, um, her knowledge for like transportation and, and housing is, is, you know, I've learned something a lot, um, every time that we're in these forums or, and I think that we learn a lot of new stuff every time, uh, about each other. And I really respect how respectful, um, so far the, um, campaign has been because I've seen other candidates interact in other districts. Um, and so I, I really, uh, respect that. Um, you know, you can't control other people that are around, but just I really respect the, the por, the, that's portal between us two.
Yeah, I would say all of that, uh, absolutely, like, I, I don't wanna be Joy's boss, I wanna be Joy's partner, uh, in terms of working together. And, uh, and I have nothing but the utmost respect, um, for Joy, for the community that you represent, for the way that you conduct yourself and, um, and, and for the, the way that you're, the way that you're doing a really hard thing in an oftentimes what can be a toxic and hostile environment. in an oftentimes what can be a toxic and hostile environment. Um, and I see, I see how that's affecting all of us and I, and I, um, I wish that wasn't the case because I think that everybody here deserves to have a conversation between people who are here to talk about how we can serve you. Uh, and I have tremendously enjoyed, uh, and am so grateful that that has been the tone in our, in our race so far. So, um, yeah.
Well, thank you so that much. We need, uh, open this democratic discourse right now, so I appreciate it.